Para el Consilio de la Ciudad de Arazo. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. Está en el edificio su presencia estatal. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. Está en el edificio su presencia estatal. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. Está en el edificio su presencia estatal. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023. Con el presidente de la Comunidad de la Ciudad. Está llamándose en esta noche. El 25 de marzo, 2023.[1204.01]
The public hearings are open and seeing no members wishing to be heard, these matters continue to April fifteenth, three weeks from today.
Next item is, Mr. President, items which public hearings have been held, items three through six, item number three is an ordinance that has an urgency clause and twelve votes are required.
Okay, twelve members are expected today. Items three through six, public hearing has been held in committee, a motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. And seeing no such motion, matters are before us. Members wishing to call special? Item four and six called special by Mr. Parks. Leaving items three and five, we anticipate twelve members being present today. Leaving item five. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That is approved. Please. Next items.
Items which public hearings have not been held, item seven through thirty-one, item number thirteen is communication from Public Works Committee that has been submitted without recommendation.
Okay, well, we need a motion on that.
Yes, Mr. President.
Unless there's a motion on item thirteen. Item seven through thirty-one, I do not have request members of the public to address the council on these items, so we shall leave the public hearing satisfied. Any specials? Item seven through thirty-one. Miss Hahn.
Siete al treinta y uno, señora Hahn.
Okay, thirteen special by Miss Hahn.
Y dos, llamamos especial por el señor Makowski.
Any other specials?
Por otro especial.
Sixteen called special by Mr. Holden. Members, any other specials?
Y un especial.
Item seven through thirty-one before us, I have items twelve, thirteen, and sixteen called special, seeing no other specials, Madam Clerk, please open the roll and tabulate the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved, item...
Mr. President.
Mr. Holden.
I have no problem with item sixteen.
Todos lo puedo aprobar.
And if nobody else wants to be heard, item sixteen. Mr. Holden's questions have been answered.
Cuando la pregunta se contesta, vamos a abrir la lista en asuntos seis.
It's closed, the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, let's give the clerk a second to have the roster of things that Ms. Perry has joined us, bringing us thirteen members. But temporarily go back to item number...
Three, which was an emergency item.
We have thirteen members present. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, item number three. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That is approved.
Está probando para adelante, por favor.
Next items.
Next item, Mr. President, on the supplemental agenda, items thirty-two and thirty-three are items which public hearings have not been held.
Items thirty-two and thirty-three now be before us, and I do not have request members of the public to address the council on these items. Shutting the public hearing satisfied.
Members wishing to call these matters special? Item thirty-two.
Item thirty-three.
Item thirty-three.
Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Trece si, esos están aprobados, para adelante en el treinta y dos, adelante por el treinta y tres, por favor.
For what, on item?
Adelante en el cinco, ya se puso para adelante, señor Brenson.
Next item, please.
Going back to the items called special, item number four, we were called special by Councilmember Parks. I understand there is an amending motion that is in the process of being distributed.
I sent it in front of us, señor Parks. Muchas gracias, señor presidente. Me gustaría que me gustaría que hagáis un entendimiento de la terminología y qué es lo que estamos pidiendo en el sentido de que un ordenanza del fiscal de la ciudad.
Do we have the appropriate department staff here?
Tenemos el equipo...
Item number four.
Asunto número cuatro.
Mr. Garcetti, can I...
Señor Garcetti, puedo solicitar ayuda en el asunto cuatro, tenemos a señor Park con preguntas.
Ah, here you are.
Aquí está usted.
Let's begin with a brief presentation.
Vamos a empezar con la presentación, pequeño asunto, Jasper Williams.
Jasper Williams, Community Department. The big box ordinance came to us as an assignment from the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, and has also been heard at the Employment and Economic Development Committee. The issue is basically one that causes us to examine through a formal process, the impact of big box retailers on the retail activity that currently exists in areas where the city is currently making significant investments, and that is defined currently as empowerment zones, enterprise zones, renewal communities. In those areas, not only do we have tax incentives that accrue to small businesses there where we're trying to stimulate business activity, but we also are doing a significant amount of lending, such as at Chesterfield Square and at other retail projects. Our research shows us that across the country, big box stores, one hundred fifty thousand square feet or larger, typically have a significant impact on not only local small businesses, but even some of the larger retailers like your typical supermarkets, et cetera. And so what we are engaging in is an examination of those impacts on projects where we've already invested money, because we don't want to have a big box come in and kill the progress that we're making on any given small business effort. So to examine that and then come back with an ordinance recommendation that would provide a basis for mitigating some of those economic impacts is the intent of this particular action.
Is that dealing with any retail store or limited retail?
Con alguna tienda de mayor tipo, cierta, algunas tiendas de mayor, eso es parte de lo que ejerciste haciendo definir la gran caja, que sería pactado, lo que se le quería parar.
The other item is that when he talks about less than ten percent of the floor space dedicated to non-taxable items, what does that represent?
Well, actually, it's just the opposite, it's ten percent or more of their total square footage being dedicated to non-taxable items. What that actually goes to is the competition factor that relates to retailers like small grocers and even some of the larger grocers.
Mayorías como pequeños mercados o algunos de los mercados más grandes, una gran caja es que puede cortar los años. Entonces, that's how that part of the definition comes in there to explore it kind of at an empirical level and figure out what does that mean for our existing retailers. Your job would be to look citywide and determine what is the impact in other cities plus what it may impact in this city.
Exactly, and then come back with recommendations for again potential mitigation measures.
Gracias.
She recognizes Mr. Wilson.
Basically, this is a rehash of the original Bobby... The hecho original de la ciudad, Goldberg. Intento en grandes cajas.
I can't speak.
Yo no puedo hablar. Sí, es lo que es. Pónganle atención. Es lo que pidieron, no fue contestado. Originalmente, esto fue intentado para parar las tiendas de grandes cajas, para tener mercados, porque estaban poniendo a los pequeños mercados fuera de negocio. Y básicamente fue hecho por uno de los sindicatos. Mayoristas tengo problema que les soy yo, por tu acierto acuerdo. Ya tenemos una ordenanza de grandes cajas que yo tuve hace muchos años, que acepta la figura de cien mil pies cuadrados, sin nada más grande que cien mil pies cuadrados necesitaba, un plazo especial del proceso. Y la razón por eso era para darnos la habilidad de poner condiciones, no decir sí o no en ciertas situaciones. Ahora, paralimente, eso no fue suficiente, porque estas tiendas estaban entrando, estaban poniendo, los mercados grandes también, pero... La situación es que creo que pudiéramos tener alternativa con la ordenanza existente, algo más de cien mil pies cuadrados para no dejarlos, que tuvieran un departamento. That's why I questioned this when it first came up. Now, I recognize the fact that there are other small businesses that are at risk when you have a Walmart or a Costco or somebody like that that goes into an area. And I think we do need to protect to a certain degree those businesses without getting into the restraint of trade situation. So I'm going to support this, but I want everybody to understand, and I think that we need to be very cautious on how we proceed with this. We need to make sure it's used in the right areas. And maybe we can find a way to look at each case on a case-by-case basis. And rather than say that ten percent can't be used, there may be some areas where a full market may be great in some areas that doesn't have any markets. So we need to be able to structure this to fit individual situations rather than it be a fits-all type thing, because fits-all is not going to fit the entire city. No va a dirigir a la situación, solo nos van para delante, voy a apoyar la motion. Espero que adelante, el estudio sea hecho, que mantengan ese elemento, que va a ser importante. Yo, por lo menos, yo no voy a estar aquí cuando el estudio regrese, el estudio ya está, pero quiero que todos ustedes pongan atención, porque es importante. Ustedes van a tener que estructurar esto de tal manera para que pueda caber en cada situación que tengan en sus distritos. Muchas gracias, señor Brenson.
Mary.
Sure.
Currently, that is, staffs preliminary thinking in the matter that we would, to the extent that this matter comes to fruition, then we expect that we'll be coming back with recommendations that would include case-by-case consideration of each instance.
Mr. Garcetti.
Señor Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I agree with you, Mr. President, and I think we do have to be cautious, and that's why it merits this study, and I appreciate the CDD stepping forward to do this. And it's no longer ten percent of floor space, we're really talking about SKUs, store-keeping units now, the number of items that are in there, which allows us to have that. And I do think we do need to do it on a case-by-case basis, so we have that flexibility that we will look at in individual cases. I think also the difference between what's been done in the past is that we, I looked at this really from a planning and land use perspective, and there's many people now who are really saying we have to look at this too from an economic development perspective. That we, as a city, are spending tremendous amount of money with the federal government, the state government, on empowerment zones. We have designated renewal communities, we have community redevelopment areas as well. We spend a lot of our public monies to try to revitalize these areas. If the effects sometimes of certain types of big box stores is to gut that same money that we're putting forward, it seems to be counterproductive to that money. It seems to be money down the drain. And we know that in many of our areas in our neighborhoods, when we have the grocery stores that are there right now, like the Ralphs, that's an anchor for one of those malls that has the neighborhood barber shops, and we have the nail salon and the hair salon, and you know, different things that are cleaners that are right there. And looking to make sure that we keep those neighborhood-owned and operated businesses, which is part of our economic development strategy, keeping going with good paying jobs, I think also part of what the study is. But I heard my fellow supporters today, because this does just that, it begins to study that to make sure we can make those connections, see whether they're out there, and then we can move forward in the policy direction we take.
Thank you. Señor Holden, gracias por el poder, por el deber, señor presidente. Mi vista, treinta mil dólares perdidos, que mucho por esto están. Tenemos las tiendas de los papás, los supermercados, tiendas de papá y mamá, se fueron, los muelles. Y unos de los supermercados, eso es una transición. Eso estaba pasando, grandes cajas, están para quedar quietos, y no van a pararlos. Viniendo a la comunidad. El problema es que en el centro de Los Ángeles, les tienen los ángeles. Ellos vienen con grandes cajas porque tienen clientes potenciales, pero no están aquí porque tienen espacio abierto. Entonces, van a hacer estos servicios que han hecho. Como le he hecho al mall de Crenshaw. Y le diría ustedes que...
The hundred fifty thousand square foot ordinance for an ordinance for that big box, you have the information that you need. What kind of variables are you asking for? What can this consultant tell us?
El soltante los puede decir, decirle que no sepa, tiene alguna idea?
Well, there are pieces of information that the consultant would work with us in gathering, one that has to do with an extensive review of the existing case studies in literature on the matter, that at this point, quite honestly, CDD staff's capacity is limited in terms of our ability to do this project and do others. We also will want assistance with actually writing the proposed mitigating measures that go beyond our basic expertise in terms of land use management, et cetera. So that's what we're using for.
First of all, you've got to come up with what is the matrix? You have ten percent of the square footage for non-taxable items, and you can set aside ten percent of that space and then not put that many items in that space, what you're doing is circumventing the ordinance in the very beginning. If you decide, well, you have to sell so much of that space occupied for non-taxable items, then you're talking about a certain aspect of the matrix. And then you have other variables. So it's really simple for the department, you've got planning, land use, expertise, it's all. They can establish an ordinance at almost any time, city attorney, anytime they choose to do so. It's just something I don't think they want to do. And when they come back, what's the timeline, this consultant giving you support?
We want to have our residences back to this group by June.
June what?
I'm sorry, two thousand and three.
June first, June thirty?
June thirty.
Mr. Brenson said to be gone.
Señor Brenson, sería que es el...
I'm sorry, never mind. He won't be here after that.
Ella no va a estar aquí. Entonces, yo voy a votar por eso, pero cuando venga el nuevo para discutir esto, voy a predicarlo.
Thank you.
Gracias, señor Holden, sí reconoce el señor Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. A couple of things, while I agree with, except for that, as Councilman Burton has stated, many of the neighborhoods, many of the areas in our city are going through some hard decisions. If you look at the notion of opportunity cost, what does it take to invest in one kind of development or another? It's obvious to all of us that the city did not evolve in a manner in which every neighborhood had the opportunity to benefit from advances in land use principles, theories, economics, the sense of place, and when you build homes. So now we have areas, like in my district, I keep saying this, I have twenty thousand persons per square mile. I have high numbers of people, and hard decisions have to be made. For us to not understand, as Councilman Garcetti has stated, the investment the city has made could build up and deal with the pressures imposed on these communities, we do not have access to parks, we do not have access to housing, who are living three, four times in one household. We need to understand the price of that land and the opportunity cost we're paying for not investing in a certain way. For us, for me, as a city, we have to understand what the big box means when it consumes land, and we don't understand the benefits from that. And that's all we're saying, is let's be clear, what the decision means, how will it impact the neighborhood? And we look in the long run, we forego the ability to build... Regulation facilities, training facilities, education, housing, what are we doing to infrastructure? Are we denying our youth opportunities? Are we not allowing the structure of that energy because there's no place to play? These have very real dollar impacts on the population and the quality of life. So this study is necessary, we need to look at how we make these decisions, and it's a certain part of the city, it means a lot more than others, because we do not have the luxury of options. Muchas gracias. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I also wanted to ask if your study, you can consider the following issues in downtown Los Angeles, we have two new redevelopment areas in all the common corridors south of the Santa Monica Freeway, redevelopment areas. And in many cases, there are a great number of opportunities available for adaptive reuse of buildings with uses that have become... They're empty buildings, they're buildings that are underutilized, and do provide some opportunity for square footage for larger stores such as Costco or a Walmart, but could go into a building and be adaptably reused, bring much-needed economic redevelopment into the area, new jobs, and take an existing building so that it doesn't do what a normal big box would do, which would come and take a large portion of land, knock out neighborhood retail businesses, and, you know, basically bring down the neighborhood rather than raising it up. So I would ask that you would consider that issue as well, because that is something that's really quite unique to the ninth district, since I have the greatest number of inventory of buildings that have the potential for adaptive reuse.
Yes, ma'am.
Sí, señora.
Other members wishing to be heard at this time? Seeing none, members who have...
And there is also an amending motion by Councilmember Garcetti.
Okay. In nature, that has been circulated unless there's an objection, we'll consider the item as amended, item four A. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That is approved.
Está probado.
Next item, please.
Item number six, called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, item six.
Asunto seis.
Does the department staff here?
Está... ¿Quién va a venir?
Yes, sir.
Sí, señor, nomás quería preguntar un par de preguntas, se debe tener mi tiempo para pasar estos. Yo me estaba interesado en ver esas posiciones, particularmente esas posiciones juradas que estamos hablando. Creo que setecientos mil dólares para este año fiscal. Y con el proyectado de veintiséis millones, cortos en el departamento de presupuesto. Yo creo que el artículo, el artículo, el artículo está bien.
Am I dealing with the right one?
I think we're on item six right now. I believe your concerns are related to item twelve, the un-freeze for the consent position, consent property.
You, I'm back. I got a question on that one.
En la posición Q, es lo que me estaba sabiendo, cuando generalmente pusimos este plan para...
Were the personnel costs a part of the bond fund?
Yes.
Okay, because we got in trouble the last bond fund, it was not funded, and we used bond fund money, and was criticized for not having built a couple of police stations. I just want to verify that it was stated, because I remember when we went out to the public, we pretty well emphasized it was buildings, and it didn't seem like we emphasized it was administrative or personnel cost.
Before you, it represents a very small percentage in terms of dollars overall bond that will support our Q program, our public safety program. And we made a commitment to the public and also to this council that, in fact, we would use a very, very small percentage for administrative staff, which are needed to function in a project management capacity. So we have the expertise in each department who can help us move these programs along and ensure we keep them on time and on budget.
I'm just concerned that the public knows that, because that was a big contention between the last couple of bond funds. And again, I haven't been involved in that process, I don't recall advising them that administrative or personnel costs are going to come out of this bond fund.
Well, which we did, and then on an annual basis, we'll be reporting through Public Safety and First Year Committee, ITGS, and then Public Safety, then on the full council, on exactly how we're spending those dollars, those dollars, and whether or not we're keeping on schedule and within the dollars associated with this bond.
Ms. Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to reassure everyone that this is, although it's only dealing with the staffing plan, it is part of what was put forward in the bond calculations, and it is the number of people necessary to be able to deliver the buildings on time and on budget. There is a separate report that I think has come through Budget and Finance and Public Safety, which will be on the agenda shortly, which deals with the overall Prop Q and Prop F status report on the projects themselves, talking about where we are in acquisition, where we are in construction, where we are in delivering of the projects on a six-year overall build-out and schedule. So that reports specifically with a lot of the charts and information available from each of the three different departments, Police, Fire, and Animal Services. I think it will be on the council agenda in the very near future, really giving the staffs work. But this is corollary to it, it was recommended by the three committees unanimously, because in fact, with the new Oversight Committee and the Citizens Oversight Committee, we are delivering these projects, and I think it is evident out in the community, as some of these properties are now under construction, and hearings and public community meetings are now underway in terms of the designs and implementation of these projects being shared with the community and our neighborhood councils. So I wholeheartedly recommend this, so that we can keep moving forward on these important projects throughout the city.
Other members wishing to be heard, item number six.
Could I add one last comment, just to put it further context, that on a percentage basis, the staff cost represents approximately five percent of the total bond for the entire six-year period of the program.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members. Progress five, item five, this report clearly states that you're delegating authority to the CEO to exempt from the hiring freeze the backfield conditions of Proposition Q on a case-by-case basis, if the backfield authority is as critical and if the effective department is able to meet its targeted reduction goal. And what it suggests to me, at least, that if you have a surplus of funds there, which could be used for some other... Other use could be made of it. Then it's enticing for the department to say, hey, we got this money. The CEO has authority to hire more people, let's do it in field backfield. And you may not necessarily need to have those positions filled, maybe the CEO can respond to that and have the department justify the request to have the CEO do it and bypass the council.
What we're asking for is the authority to... Yes, to backfill positions, because in most instances, if not all, what departments have done is reassigned staff from existing critical assignments to Prop Q to ensure we meet the mandate of the bond program, to make sure these projects are built on time and on budget. And yet, these individuals, like I said, have been moved from other critical assignments, and so to facilitate filling those positions, we're asking for backfill authority. If not, then we have other assignments that would be left vacant, and with that, there'd be an operational or service impact in these departments.
So, Mr. Deaton, you want to comment on this?
I'm very supportive of proceeding with this.
Well, then you would just want to high vote, why don't you just say that?
No, no.
No, what I'm saying is that then we're going to leave it to Mr. Puchico, who we trust, to hold the department as accountable, and when it makes such a request that they have to really justify. Of course, the council won't know that this discussion, the transaction taking place, wouldn't it be okay, taking away an authority from you, that when this is done, that you maybe just f y to the council?
Oh, absolutely, we happen to do that.
I think that it should be something that you could put in this report, and suggest that, yes, you have the authority, and yes, you can do that, but when those cases arise where you're taking that kind of authority, that you notify the council that this is being done and why, and it's being justified in terms of... I saw movement, Mr. President. Thank you. Mr. Holden, members any objections? Seeing none, then we'll incorporate Mr. Holden's suggestions into our action today. Seeing no other members wishing to be heard, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number twelve, called special by Councilmember Ms. Sikowski.
Ms. Sikowski.
If I could have, I think Mr. Deaton and Ms. Garrett are in the back, I'd like to have them come forward, and Mr. Chale as well. Members, this is a request for positions in the Los Angeles Police Department under the consent decree. This has been something that has been worked through with the Department of Justice, with the Police Department, with the monitor. For the most part, these positions, these are not part of the reorganization plan. Let me put that out there. This is something that predated the reorganization plan in our effort to try to meet the requirements of the consent decree. We get the monthly report on the status of the consent decree, we have this in committee, and there are issues particularly in the audit area where we need to make sure that the...
these functions are being provided and managed so that we can meet the goals of the consent decree. I'd like to ask Ms. Garrett, Mr. Fujioka, to further elaborate on these positions, where they have gone through review in terms of the working group, and elaborate a little bit. Ms. Garrett, Mr. Fujioka.
You want to start? As stated by the councilwoman, these positions have been reviewed and recommended by an Oversight Committee that is working directly with the Police Department, all consent decree related issues. These programs are fully supported by our office in terms of asking your approval for the positions to be unfrozen. It's something that is heaven, has already been factored into this year's budget during our budget deliberations last year, and something that should go forward.
Specifically, the consent decree work group has reviewed these positions. And to highlight the issues that we're dealing with, there are a number of positions in the Audit Division. As you know, and we've reported to council on several occasions, we have some shortfalls in that to be able to accomplish all of the tasks that are required. Recently, we acted to take some of the audits from the S E U group and transfer them to the Audit Division. So we're giving them additional workload. We need to ensure that they have the staff available. The six investigator positions highlighted in this report are indeed civilian positions. In addition, there are a number of positions from the Internal Affairs Group. If you recall back in October of last year, we came to the City Council and indicated why we were in compliance with the investigative timeframes required by the consent decree. We were not having a high enough transfer rate into I A G when we have now completely transferred a number of additional investigations that are the serious type and require additional time to investigate to the Internal Affairs Group. We reported to you at that time that that was the failure in Pittsburgh to get out of the decree. They had not adequately staffed their Internal Affairs Group, and so that portion of the decree was continued beyond the five-year closure. So at that time, we came up with a staff transition plan to ensure that the Internal Affairs Group had adequate staff. We're monitoring that on a monthly basis. There are a number of positions included in here. There are Teams Two related positions, as you all are aware, we are in the process of contracting for Teams Two. The Department of Justice has approved the design document, and our clock is ticking to get that completed within a 21-month period. These positions are essential to us to be able to complete that endeavor on a timely fashion. Finally, there are positions in here for the Office of the Inspector General. As you know, if you read the Monitor's report, we have several deficiencies in the Office of the Inspector General regarding timely completion of audits and various reviews that are required under the consent decree. It is important that we maintain their staff at a minimum level to ensure that they can accomplish those efforts. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Thank you, Ms. Garrett. This is recommended you heard in detail by the City Legislature Valance Office who works with the consent decree working group, the city administrative officer, the mayor, the Police Department. This is something that we need to do. It is, as I say, get this report monthly from the Monitor and the Department of Justice. These were pre-recommended in the C O's recommendation for the budget last year. This is just exemption from the hiring freeze to fill these positions so that we don't get further behind. These are not new positions. They were expected positions that we just need to fill. And so I'm asking for the approval by the council.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues. What troubles me on this matter is it has not gone to committee. It's over five million dollars expenditure. And I don't question the fact that we have to comply with the consent decree. What I have a concern about is this was not waived through the personnel committee. And there are certain positions that are critical. And there's other positions that I have concern about to have a current committee. But what I'm looking at and the expenditure is in the documents I see of over five million dollars. And it was not waived out of my personnel committee. And somehow, if it was waived out of personnel committee, it wasn't waived out of personnel committee with my knowledge. And then there's a note that I received that somehow there was an automatic personnel waive for Mayor's new freeze rules, which I am unaware of. If the mayor has new unfreeze rules that don't affect the committees that review in this particular case Personnel Committee and Budget Finance Committee. So the issue at hand is if it's critical and necessary, I don't equate with that. My concern is we have a committee structure where these matters are heard, the pieces of the public are put together, appropriations are put forward, and then we make the recommendations. Because I don't think you see a personnel committee report. If it was waived, it was not waived or it was waived through without my knowledge or the understanding that the mayor had the jurisdiction to take control of this, as it states on this sheet, automatic personnel waive for Mayor's new freeze rules. And I was unaware of that. So I would respectfully request that this be heard in committee in the proper arena. If there are certain committees or certain positions that are critical at this particular juncture, I would support that. But I don't think that we can waive sixty-two positions and just blink our eyes with over five million dollar expenditure without hearing the pieces of the public. I just think it's proper that we hear what we need and why we need it because we don't have all the information here with us today. I spoke to the bar Eric regarding this, and she said certain positions are critical, the others they could send to committee for review. And that would be my respectful request that we follow that protocol to make sure that we have our guidelines in place. Thank you. So that'd be my emotion, that we approve that second portion, and we send those others to committee for review, personnel committee.
Members' motion, is there a second?
Can I just make a comment, please? Because under the current council unfreeze process, and as part of the file, consent decree related positions go straight to council. And in fact, it was the committee clerk or the person assigned to the personnel committee who waived, who took the positions when they were submitted through the committee process and sent and directed to council. So it's not part of Mayor's unfreeze, it's part of existing council file and the structure established for the council unfreeze.
Okay, Ms. Siskowski for a quick clarification, and then Mr. Holden is next, by Mr. Reyes.
Now I have two quick clarifications. One, I was going to ask Mr. Zine if he was going to want us to go personnel, he would agree to schedule that personnel committee as quickly as possible. But then according to what Mr. Fujioka said, that we don't need to act on this because it is part of the Mayor's unfreeze.
Is part of the council unfreeze structure?
We have a special procedure, I think, that on consent decree that it comes directly to council.
Okay, I understand now. Members, what we did is because of consent decree issues and the urgency of getting those positions filled, we said instead of going to committee automatically all the time, these would come straight to council. Mr. Zine, because of the number of these positions, has asked to come to committee. Although I think there's an urgency, I think if we continue, if he has the committee meeting on Tuesday, and we get this to council, maybe have a placeholder next week.
The exception that we would recommend that the audit positions and the positions in the Inspector General be acted on today.
And are you able to identify those?
A quick yes or no, Ms. Zine.
Mr. President, I will schedule this on Tuesday per the request. I have no problem with the critical positions, that in Inspector General, I think there's a couple in Inspector General, and a few in audit, and the bulk of those in the other categories of consent decree. I would have no problem doing that, but to send the rest of it to committee, and we will schedule that on Tuesday. I'd be fine with that.
And I've just been told that of these sixty-nine positions, eleven are the critical ones that Mr. Deaton has talked about, the audit positions, the Inspector General's special task force. So let's move on those and send it back to committee for Tuesday.
Thank you. Ms. Siskowski motion. Mr. Holden is next, by Mr. Reyes and Mr. Parks.
Mr. Zine is absolutely correct. Mr. Fujioka is correct when he says that maybe this is the council unfreeze authority, not the mayor. Let me just tell you. The council can vote to unfreeze. The council can vote to freeze. When the matter comes before the council, what it chooses to do, it will do. And today, hopefully, as requested the chair, the special task force, is a good friend to the council. If he wants to send it back to committee and not have this committee bypass, then eight votes will say we should do that. And there's no urgency, obviously, because if you thought it needed to be done sooner, this matter would have been before us last month. Two months ago. A year and a half ago. How long has this consent decree been in place?
Since June fifteenth, two thousand and one.
Since June fifteenth, two thousand and one. That's almost two years. You know what you need to be for then. So here you are today saying this is an urgency. I understand. The Bureau of Justice do that, Mr. Deaton. Everything is urgency. That's why you can go by committee. Because if you go to committee, then the council is in charge. If you bypass committee, the council is not in charge. So today, we're going to be in charge. And I'm going to ask... I'm going to ask Mr. Zine's motion. That I would like to send it all to me. One week, we should make a difference. And let's hear it all. Mr. Zine? One week won't make a difference. Then it's all committee.
I think, I mean, I want to be honest and fair with it, and we can schedule it on Tuesday. It's just called a special meeting, that's fine. I have no problem doing that. I just want to make sure we have the fair hearing. We get all the pieces put together. That's done fairly. We're talking over filing of dollars. It's a lot of money to spend on something critical because of the federal consent decree. Can we ask that the item be continued on the council agenda next Wednesday? So that will have, you'll have your meeting here on Tuesday, we consider, then we don't have to wait another week. That's fine. And we're just, Mr. Tolan, though, it's been... Sometime the consent decree has been in place. However, it is not something that's static. The need for positions have changed and will continue to change over time. Are you speaking to me, Mr. Deaton? Anybody that'll listen?
Then I've been listening all the time. That's why, in any event, that's why it changes all the time.
It changes from time to time. We have to respond so we can be in a position to comply, and that compliance requires different kinds of actions. And it'll be changing over the next two years as much as it has in the past two.
All right. Is these requests changed? Do you get consent? Do you discuss it with just the department with the justice department? The court discussed it with the Justice Department, we discussed it with the Police Department, the Mayor's Office, the I T A, the administrative office, etc. All right. I mean, I don't want to go after you anymore. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to support my colleague, Councilman Zine. We have an individual here who has decades of service in the Police Department. That happens to chair the committee dealing with personnel issues. So why not benefit from that experience and understand this discussion in this process? So, by all means, we should huddle back to committee. If we're not penalizing or putting ourselves at risk with the courts with anyone else that's in the process. But two, because this is an ongoing process, has the council had the benefit of understanding what our timeframes are like in this process? Do we have anything like that that allows us to understand the timing issues here so that we know what's urgent, what isn't? Is there anything like that in our ability to understand the process? Hold my time, please.
Well, we've taken the position, and that's why the waiving of going through the committee, that filling the positions on a consent decree, for the most part, are critical. And that we have no, it goes through a process that is recommended by the Police Department, but it's worked through the consent decree working group involving the city administrative office, the Mayor's Office, our office, et cetera, to, in fact, make sure that we all agree that that's the positions required and it's on point on trying to be in compliance with a consent decree and then move forward to the necessary unfreezes or whatever resources are necessary. This is tantamount to the one you just, in my view, of Prop Q. And we have objectives that we have no choice on. And when we do decide that we need more people in auditing, it's not because, that's not idly come, we don't idly come to that conclusion. And these are not normal type requests for positions in that respect. They are, in our view, the ones that are required in order to comply with, that we're going to, and we get reported on every three months. And so there's a, between those three months, a very short time period. Going to committee for a week is not a problem, and I think we'll be able to defend what we have in mind very well, and that's fine. But that's the reason that we have worked out this process, is that it is time sensitive, and it goes through a lot of process before it gets here.
And that begs the question, given all that dynamic process and energy, do we have a roadmap that the council can look at to say, these are kinds of big-ticket items, large hits we're going to take on our budget, so that we know what's on the horizon with these times of tightening budgets?
Right. On a regular basis, we provide status reports to the council, and the next status report will be tomorrow. It'll be on the agenda for tomorrow, we're happy to go through where we, we believe we're in compliance, where we believe we're not, where we believe other people, where other people, and what the results are in terms of resources.
And when we have the opportunity to look at next three months, next six months, so we can project out, you know, how much more personnel we have to hire of the sixty-something, eleven are essentials. So we have a lot of gray area there we can work with. There has to be some discretion here, and we need to make some real decisions on how we're going to use our resources.
Our view is all sixty are essential. We're saying that eleven need to be done today.
All right. That's fair. We'll look for the...
It's a little difference of, that's a nuance, but we believe that we would not come to you and recommend unfreezing sixty positions, given our financial situation, if we did not believe they were essential. We believe that eleven of them are more essential in terms of time to be acted upon today.
I realize we have some great stewards at the helm, but the bottom line is also, it's a road map.
We will try to attempt to, tomorrow in the status report, to give you some idea of where we see more resources being required. Teams Two is clearly a very good example of more resources.
Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of things to learn, just a couple. The number one proposal is that, particularly sworn officers, if we're talking about twenty-three officers, eventually that's twenty-three officers off the street. And that is a burden of time, not only on political crisis, but the crime crisis, that we can ill afford to have twenty-three more officers off the street in light of the war, in light of crime, and a variety of other things. Because this motion gives an impression that immediately they would fill those twenty-three spots. And so therefore, the triple effect is it would impact the street. The other issue I have is that we have a budget that basically stated this about twenty-six million dollars already, and we're now on the process of looking at adding a million dollars this year, five years, and this year, in an incremental stage, and we're only three months away from looking at the total. To determine where and how it fits in our priorities. Consent decree is important, but if we balance it in light of lives of the street, is it worth at this moment to take twenty-three people off the street in light of homeland security and a variety of other things that the community is asking about? And then we look at the paper this morning, two young people, fourteen, thirteen, thirteen victims on our city street, and what car, what part of the city will these three officers come from? I think that's the biggest issue for me. Not in, it's not important, but in light of life and property in the city, can we afford twenty-three more officers off the street?
Difficult call. But we are under a corridor to reform under the consent decree. I think that you know enough about my office to... If we can replace it with a civilian, we will do so. In audit, we have been making that shift to try to use less sworn officers. They, in certain of these functions, as we have been taking a long look at how we might avoid using more officers, but in some cases, there just is no choice. They have unique experiences, and when they look at a file or a piece of information, they look at it in an entirely different fashion. The, notwithstanding, you know, thirty years of watching police officers, believe they can do anything, there's some things that other people can do almost as well, maybe not elected official, but nonetheless, I believe that we are resistant to using sworn officers, don't want to use sworn officers unless we absolutely have to, for the reasons you're talking about, but also financial reasons. And this is kind of the minimum, we think. And this is kind of the minimum we think is necessary to be in compliance with the, we can to the...
I wanna, now I don't want you to fall out of the chair, I wanna support Dennis's motion, but I'll also ask that, we know that the consent decree is five years, and that do we need to do this at this time, in this three month period before the budget, and we relate to this issue, we have a five year span of dealing with consent decree.
Going to committee, I think that actually, Mr. Reyes, his comment yesterday, like tomorrow on the status report, gives you, will give an idea of maybe the roadmap of where we are. And it does bring mine to the same of politics does, like, strange bed follows.
Thank you. I was going to just answer Mr. Reyes's question about what is the roadmap, where are we? Mr. Reyes, we do have the roadmap, the consent decree puts it out and tells us where we are in markets, for instance, Teams Two, the big computerized program. We knew we had to have something done by certain dates, something else down the long way. The entire consent decree is like that, when the audit division must be up and providing certain audit information, when transfers went for disciplined hearing cases from one area to internal affairs. All of that is in the roadmap, and members, particularly because now, because of the issue of implication of costs, we are now looking at it a little more in detail. Ask your staff members to get you that report tomorrow. It's intense, it's the independent monitors report, it's all of that, so you can start to see this roadmap. The only other thing I would like to say to Councilman Parks, these are not new positions, this is not a new addition. This is what we did plan for in the budget, this is what we were expecting to do, but everything got frozen because of the hiring freeze. And then we know we are making exemptions. We had said that consent decree, as Mr. Deaton said, is like Proposition Q or the other one, they are things that are one of the highest level of mandates that we should fill. These are not all foreign positions, and in fact, we are moving to make a little more than civilianized, and I think even more after that. But these are not the new positions, I will tell you, that under the reorganization plan, the department has asked for yet more position. That will come under much more critical review. These were ones that last spring when we went through, we said these should be in place, these should be working throughout the year, and we budgeted for them. The staff, the mayor, the working group, and, you know, with the Department of Justice and Independent Monitor looking over our backs, has said, you should do these. These are the important ones to keep going with that roadmap that was previously set, with the money expenditure that was previously approved by this council, so it's not new. This one is not new. If it might come down the pipe, it will be, but that's why I'm happy to agree with Mr. Zine's recommendation, to send this to committee, get a little more clarity, I think we'll get more clarity again tomorrow. But do ask that the eleven positions, as Mr. Deaton and Ms. Garrett indicated, go forward with approval today, as they specified, and then send this hold into committee so we understand it more clearly.
Mr. Zine. Mr. President, and just summing up, April first is April Fool's Day, we will hear this at April first next Tuesday, even though it's April Fool's Day, we'll still hear this. Yes, I'm the chair of that committee, and Councilmember Misakowski is on with me, and also Councilmember Holden. Just, just, when I, when I look at the breakdown of personnel you're looking at, and not to belabor this anymore than we have, we have one lieutenant, we have twelve sergeants, we have nine detectives, and one police officer, or told them twenty-three. That, those are personnel, that is chief, I keep saying chief, Councilman Parks has said are coming out of field, we need to recognize that. And one of the issues we're gonna look at is what we can replace with civilian personnel for those critical positions that have to be done. And when we're looking at a five million dollar expenditure, that forty million dollar consent decree, and I don't know what we spend or how much more is gonna be appropriated, but when we have all these other issues that are pressing, and the detectives in the field say they don't have the support that they need to get fingerprints run, they don't have the supported place to get things done, we have to look at the priorities, and as Councilman Parks has said, we've got people in the community of Los Angeles who are suffering crime, victims of crime, and we're putting all these other priorities, and we're really forgetting about what the main responsibility is of protecting life and property. And I'm not saying the consent decree is not important, but when we have innocent people being victimized, we have an obligation to those people, and there are serious problems right now, that everything seems to be focusing on homeland security and consent decree, and we're forgetting the other priorities that this city is responsible for. So in this committee, some of the questions are gonna be, what can we put civilians in, in rules of sworn personnel that have to be out there doing the job of protection and service? That's why they carry a gun, that's why they wear a badge, so that's why we wanna hear it. But I'll approve those eleven, we'll have it April first, and be prepared for, we welcome that discussion, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, the members wishing to be heard on this item at this time.
Mr. President, there is an amending motion that has been distributed, Councilman, send that to committee also, okay? And approve the eleven positions today, the audit and inspector general positions.
Without objection, we can consider the matter as amended by the two motions. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Fourth width, please, next item.
Next item, Mr. President, item number thirteen was called special by Councilmember Han, and I believe there are cards that are, have been submitted.
Do you have a card on this item? Mr. Burton?
Before we do this, just for a moment, can I ask for reconsideration on item twenty-five for a purpose of correction?
That's item twenty-five P and R.
Mr. Motion has a motion for reconsideration, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
The corrected version is on the desk.
Okay. Amending motions have been distributed, without objection, let's consider those matters as amended. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Fourth width, please.
Mr. President, we have fourth width on thirty-three, and six, and the eleven positions on twelve.
Thirty-three, fourth width, item six has been sent forthwith, and the previous matter was sent forthwith as well. Item thirteen, now before us, the council calls for Mr. Richard Graves. Please come forward at this time.
Yeah, I'm here representing homeowners in the area impacted by the animal shelter that's going to be built in San Pedro. I submitted a petition to the council, approximately fifty-five names of homeowners in the Miraflores Canyon, that are opposed to placing the animal shelter at the location. Our neighborhood councils had recommended an alternate location, which was at five points on Gaffey Street, which was a considerable distance away. So once, we've seen that this site has been selected, we are now concerned, not only about the animal shelter, but about the fire station that's going to be adjacent across the street from the animal shelter. So the impact of those two projects, the fire station and the animal shelter, will have a very negative effect on our traffic and noise in our community. Now, the Miraflores Canyon is represented by about eighty homes that have only one way to come in and out of the canyon. So right now, the current business situation, there's an impact on the traffic now, there's a gridlock situation at the traffic, like in a Miraflores and Gaffey. So with these added projects, it's going to make our neighborhood impacted considerably from traffic, and from the added noise from both facilities. So we're not necessarily opposed to either of the projects, but we are opposed to the effect it has on our neighborhood of the two projects. So what we're asking for is a mitigation, and I noticed, the reason I'm here mainly is because I noticed on the study that was done, the initial study, negative declaration for the Harvard Replacement Animal Services Center, the bottom line was, it says no mitigation measures are required. And I'm arguing that that's not necessarily true. We have a traffic problem that's going to be severely impacted by these two projects. And so we're, we're recommending that, there is a street that's partially complete, that gets us out of our neighborhood, instead of going down to the intersection where the two projects are. That is Cabrillo, which is now above half complete, and it was abandoned after being half complete. So we would like to propose that that be completed, so we have a way to get in and out of our neighborhood when this traffic situation is impacted. And the second concern we had was noise, and you know that the two projects, both are going to contribute to the noise in the neighborhood, and they will actually interact with each other. So the fire scene will cause the animals, substantial number of dogs and cats and so on, to howl, and that in our canyon, since it's all blocked in with a hill, will reverberate around the canyon and cause a considerable problem with noise. We have a homeowners association now that has a decibel limit of forty-five, so forty-five dBs, and that's very quiet. And I'm quite assured that if you don't pay particular attention to the noise for these two projects, particularly the animal shelter with the dogs howling, that that's gonna exceed that level. So, in summary, the two areas that we have a concern are noise, and we would like to see that the airborne noise coming out of those facilities is mitigated by placing in the air structures which will absorb that noise. And secondly, the traffic problem, we would like to see an alternate way for us to get out of our neighborhood, rather than going down to the intersection where this traffic has now been impacted.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on item number thirteen, members wishing to be heard, beginning with Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues, and thank you, Mr. Graves, for taking the time to come down here and express not only your concerns, but certainly the concerns of at least fifty-four, fifty-five other residents in that area. You know, as much as I say it's a new day around here, and things are different, and we do work harder to try to include all people in the process of what we do down here on the front end, before projects are completed, there still is obviously room for improvement on how we do things. However, I would say that in the old days, we would have determined the site for a new animal shelter, and most likely residents would not have even known about it until they woke up one morning and began seeing the property being raided and constructed on, and then it was probably too late to work up some mitigation efforts. And this was one of the first times I had actually gone through the process of citing one of the new facilities that the voters voted on to approve, which was, we had both a fire station and an animal shelter that came to my district, which we were very excited about. But, Mr. Graves, is correct, we actually took the proposals of the sites to all neighborhood councils in my district. I must comment that the Department of Animal Services came out to the neighborhood councils, probably for the first time ever, and made a presentation on the different sites, different locations, the issues that were involved in each. And this site, I thought uniquely, was the consensus site, because all neighborhood councils picked different first sites, but all my neighborhood councils agreed unanimously that this was the site they chose as their second favorite site. So in that sense, there was a consensus from the neighborhood councils. But clearly, when we got into the process, we realized that the residents in the Miraflores Canyon had some concerns about, you can imagine, a fire station and sirens across the street from dogs, and anybody that wakes up in the middle of the night to the sound of a siren and a dark, a dog bark, they felt that this was concern. But I will say that we have worked on both issues, the traffic issue and the noise issue. The Department of Animal Services has conducted amazingly diverse sort of noise tests, and this shelter will be constructed unlike the current shelters that we have in the city. Really will be designed with the animals facing away from residents, and sound walls that we don't have in shelters today. The other thing we've, from our fire department, is in the middle of the night, they agreed not to have their sirens initially on when they leave that facility, and they'll wait till they're farther up along the road before they turn their sirens on. So that is a good indication. We also actually have done noise issues with the siren and a dog right there, so, you know, we're really working on mitigating these issues. And for the traffic issue, you know, this is an issue that needs to be done anyway, whether or not we have a fire department there, new fire station, or a new animal shelter. This is a canyon that has only one way in and one way out, and frankly, in the case of a major disaster, or a fire in that canyon, it is really a safety issue. So I have already put my full support behind our Department of Street Services and Department of Transportation to finish that road, so that those residents and our law enforcement and public safety officers, our first responders, will have better access in and out of that canyon. But I would think that having a fire station close to this canyon actually is a blessing for all the residents and homeowners in this canyon. You've got them so much closer now in the case of an unfortunate fire in that canyon area. So what I wanna say is, we're gonna move forward with that, with the animal shelter and the fire station on that site, but we're not done with meeting with the residents. We're not done with, on a, on a regular basis, continuing to listen to every concern, address every concern until it is satisfactory with these residents, because in my opinion, it is a new day around here. And while certainly, we wanna move forward with placing schools and fire stations and animal shelters, we wanna make sure that we work closely with the residents, who will most be impacted by the decisions that we make down at City Hall. So I really wanna thank the department for working closely with neighborhood councils and with residents. I think ultimately, we're gonna have resolutions to everything that you're concerned about.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members of Ms. Han, you made the statement that years before, earlier, that the community person would not have the opportunity to come in and voice their viewpoint, because it would have been done, that they would have been made before they even knew about it. I wanna take issue with that, okay? That's not the case at all. Communities have always been involved in what's being developed in the neighborhood, especially animal shelters. We had one at Montclair, and they had one, and they were very noisy, and it was outdated, and it was not the state of the art facility. Your brother, the mayor of the city of Austin, participated in cutting the ribbon, opening up the state of the arts, animal shelter, right at the expedition, on Thirty-seventh Street, I think, right in my district. Totally soundproof. If you have some idea that what you wanna have in your neighborhood, just come to my neighborhood and see what we've done there, you, you can see what you can duplicate in your neighborhood, and I'm sure that, inasmuch as the mayor agreed that the time would give us the money for the project, but he knows what's there. Can come down there, we, we take you a walk right through what we have, and show you what we have. In fact, Ms. Han will take you there also, so that when you duplicate what we have in your district, you know that you have the best. And what we've done in the tenth district over the years is something like this, it took about fifteen years to get this state of the arts animal shelter in place. Long overdue, but it takes that kind of, that amount of time. If you don't get it done right away, if someone didn't initiate it early on, the eight years that you were gonna be here, you wouldn't have enough time to get it done. That's why you gotta do something about that.
Thank you, Mr. Holden, other members wishing to be heard on this item. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, special one motion presented by Councilmember Misakowski, seconded by Councilmember McGruel, and the city attorney will speak to the...
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll read into the record the findings for council to consider. On March seventeenth, the party forced the vacation of nineteen families from the rental units at eight East Brooks Avenue in Venice. On March eighteenth, council authorized the housing department to provide a displaced tenant relocation grant to these tenants. However, since the posting of today's agenda, it was recognized that there is now an urgent need to transfer funds from the unappropriated balance to the housing department to provide sufficient funding for council-approved tenant relocation actions. Pursuant to government code, council must first determine whether there is a need to take immediate action, and that there is a need for act, that the need for action came to the attention of council after the posting of today's agenda. If such a finding is made, council may consider this substantive motion.
Members wishing to be heard on the findings. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the findings. Please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Special one now before us, members wishing to be heard on the motion itself. Ms. Misakowski.
I just wanted to emphasize what the city attorney indicated, although this is coming from the unappropriated balance, there actually was and is a line item in the unappropriated balance for relocation costs for displaced tenants. So all we're doing is transferring some money from that specific line item in the, in the budget to the housing department, so they can work with the tenants in giving appropriate grants as is needed for those who are victims of this fire that forced the vacation of nineteen families from their property on East Brooks Avenue in Venice. It also will leave some money in the housing fund in case another disaster occurs between now and the end of the year, and whatever isn't used will be reverted and be able to reallocate in next year, so I ask for an I vote. So I ask her an eye vote.
Members wishing to be heard. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on special one. Please close the roll and tabulate to vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. For proof, please. Next item.
This is time for a comment from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Council calls for Mr. Morton Allen.
Mr. President, before you commence that, may I make a request for a motion?
Sure, Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, we'd like to reconsider item seven on Friday, the twenty-first agenda. And the reason why is because we continued that item until April eighteen. There's no council meeting on April eighteen. So instead of continuing it officially to April eighteen, we'll officially continue that item to April twenty-fifth, and that's the purpose of the motion.
Okay. Members, we have motion for reconsideration of item number seven of the previous council meeting's agenda. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate to vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That matter should be considered.
Mr. President, I move that we continue item, that specific item as it appeared on the twenty-first agenda, continue to April twenty-fifth.
April twenty-fifth. That's a new date for continuance. Let the clerk notify the proper parts. Mr. Reyes.
Item number three, go forth with please.
Item number three, forth with. We have sent that forth with, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Allen, thank you for your patience.
Good morning. I thought long and hard before I brought this before the council this morning, I was going to kind of sit back and watch the chips fall and watch the millions of dollars in lawsuits. But I got to tell you something, things have changed so much in my area. The East San Fernando Valley between Alex and Wendy and Tom, it's totally different. Everybody is happy, everything's getting done. It's just it's a total new way of life, and I don't even have it compared in the last three quarters because everything was so well protected. But this is an issue that is very dear to my heart, and I'm very concerned about it. You all know, last May seventh, there was a big press release when the mayor signed the ban on all billboards in Los Angeles, the off-site signs. I think most of the people don't understand how powerful industry is and what they have in their back pocket. And basically what it is, is when he put the ban, that was off-site signs, off-site advertising. Now, there were ten thousand off-site signs in the valley in the city. Four thousand are big billboards, four thousand are what's called Vista Media, which are eight sheets. There's another four thousand, another two thousand that are eight sheets that are on the transit shelters. Well, there was a question with this public and private property. And then on New Year's Eve, there was this, one of the companies put up a bunch of billboards, and the council determined that the ban included public properties because this was on NTA properties. Okay? So we have no off-site signs. However, you've got to, gave a contract that took a million dollars to build five thousand off-site signs on the sidewalks in the city. And those are off-site signs. It's off-site advertising, and they're the same size as Vista Media. So they're building these, and every one of those is illegal right now. And you don't think that the big companies aren't looking at that, the other companies are saying, hey, you know, you said we can't do this, you put a ban, and then you turn around and you're letting them build signs on the sidewalks. So I really feel that the city attorney needs to clarify this issue because we're going to end up having billboards in every corner because you can't let one entity build off-site signs and say the others can't.
Thank you. This concludes public comment. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral. There are excuses on this. Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused Wednesday, April twenty-second. City business, that meets council policy.
Mr. Weiss is excused.
Council President Pitya requests to be excused Wednesday, April second, to arrive at eleven-thirty for city business, that meets council policy.
Excuse granted.
Councilmember Galanter requests to be excused Tuesday, April first, for personal business, and Tuesday, April eighth, for city business. Those both meet council policy.
Ms. Galanter is excused.
And that clears the discussion.
Are there any announcements today? Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, tomorrow we scheduled to hear one of my items. We call it special for Wednesday because Mr. Weiss couldn't be here today. It relates to those demonstrators and how they were managed in West L.A. I will be out of council, nine-thirty, in a meeting across the street. Could you hold that item until eleven o'clock or notify the department that eleven, eleven-thirty will be fine? Thank you, Mr. President.
We'll do that for you. Members, are there any other announcements today? Announcements? If not, let me announce two meetings taking place this evening in the San Fernando Valley. There is a meeting of the Foothill Trails District Neighborhood Council. They're near the final stage before certification. That meeting begins this evening at six-thirty PM at Twenty Avenue Elementary School, a charter school in Lake Uterus. There is also this evening a meeting of the Mission Hills Neighborhood Watch Groups jointly with the Foothill Division, the Los Angeles Police Department, and the Episcopal Church in Mission Hills, which is on Devonshire. Ms. Missakowski.
Valley meeting is going on tonight. That Councilmember Zine and I will be attending the Tozana Property Owners Association Annual Meeting, which is going to be focusing on emergency preparedness. And they have Chief Bratton, Chief Dematre, and the two of us, and I think Bill Rosendahl is going to be moderating it. And that's going to be at the El Cap at seven o'clock.
Other announcements? Are there adjournings motions today?
Yes.
Are there any? Please rise for adjournings.
Members of the council. Mr. President, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Dr. William Putney. Dr. Putney was a veterinarian who was very well-known in the San Fernando Valley, and there was a big article in the Times, I noticed even in the Orange County edition, because I had him done in the weekend, I got that paper, that he had passed away. And he talked about all his achievements during the war, about training dogs and Silver Star and all that, which most of us never knew because Paul was a very modest guy and never spoke of those things. But I can tell you that he was one of the great leaders of the San Fernando Valley, going back when I first became active in the Associated Chambers of Commerce. Bill Putney was already there, the Net Carrier, and he was a recipient of the Fernando Award. And I think that everybody knew him, respected him, and I would ask that he survived by his wife, Betsy. And I would ask that we adjourn his memory.
Other tributes? Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. First of all, I would like to request that we adjourn today in the memory of my cousin, Brian Hunt. The mayor and I lost one of our favorite cousins yesterday afternoon. He was only fifty-four years old and died extremely suddenly and unexpectedly while he was working in his yard this afternoon in Northridge. And he leaves his wife, who is also named Gemma Hunt, and a wonderful son, Jason, and his mother, my Aunt Luella, as well as a number of aunts who are left and a number of cousins who will miss Brian dearly and cannot believe that he's been taken from us so soon. So I would ask that we adjourn his memory. And I also want us to adjourn in the memory today of a Marine who has lost his life. And I hesitated really doing this because I thought we would be spending every day probably a journey in the memory of a particular soldier who has lost his life. Maybe we should. But I wanted to do this one because it had such an interesting story and because I think it never hurts for us maybe to focus on one so that we never forget that these are actual human beings over there and actual people who live close to us who are losing their lives. And this was Marine Lance Corporal Jose Gutierrez. And he was one of the first Marines to lose his life from the Los Angeles area. And he was only twenty-two years old, and he lived in Lomita, which is very close. But he attended Harbor College, which of course is in the fifteenth district. And his story was amazing. He was a Guatemalan orphan who grew up on the streets and traveled at fourteen to the United States by train, foot and bus. And he was a graduate of North High School in Torrance and was killed just last Friday as the Marines tried to secure a crucial port city in Iraq. His mother died when he was three, and he became a homeless orphan at eight when his father died. And at fourteen, he hopped trains to get to the United States and eventually made it to Hollywood where he found shelter at a homeless facility. Social workers placed him with a foster family, Nora and Marcelo Mascherano, who began taking in foster children once their own children were grown. Jose learned English and took care of the younger foster children while keeping busy playing chess and soccer. After soccer, after high school, he attended Harbor College, where he hoped to one day become an architect. And he joined the service to give back both to his own country and to help fund his education. He played soccer at Harbor College and hoped to return there this July for the next season. He only joined the Marines a year ago today. And as his foster brother was quoted in the paper yesterday, he said he joined the Marines to pay back what he'd gotten for the U.S. For him, it was a question of honor. He'll be buried in Guatemala with full military honors and a memorial service is planned here in the South Bay at Saint Margaret Mary Church. I think we owe Jose and certainly all of the men and women who are serving there a huge debt of gratitude. And I think we probably will continue to adjourn our city council in memory of those who are losing their lives. And I think we should do that now for all those who have lost their lives since last week. And he had just written a letter home last week, and he said, please play for all of us.
All members.
Ms. Missakowski. Thank you, Mr. President. I have three tributes today. The first is in memory of Anita Strick. Anita was the mother of Susan Strick, who is the West Los Angeles Neighborhood Prosecutor. Susan has been with the city attorney's office for a number of years, formerly with citywide nuisance abatement, but been just incredible as a neighborhood prosecutor in West L.A. Her mother, Anita, and her late father, Bill Strick, were very active in Temple, where they were dedicated to the Jewish community and Jewish community life with their family and friends. She is survived by her daughter Susan, two sons, Stephen Bernard, grandchildren, and many misses and nephews. Next, I would like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Marshall Metlin. Marshall passed away this weekend, having had a battle with cancer. But he was an interesting man who, about a decade ago, suffered a horrendous attack in his home. He and his wife are home. It was a follow-home robbery. He was actually locked in the trunk of his car while his wife was taken into the house. But they were able to be rescued, and he picked himself up and said that one of the reasons this happened is because he didn't know his neighbors and his neighbors didn't know him. So he set up a significant neighborhood watch in that community, got the neighborhood involved in looking for assistant guard service, but maintained an active association with his neighbors then thereafter. He had been an executive at Matto, and he does leave his wife and daughter. And thirdly, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Norman Ticher. Norman is survived by his wife, Margie, of forty-nine years and four children. He came to the United States from Canada, and at the age of nineteen, volunteered and served in the Korean War. He was a longtime developer when he came back with Kaufman and Road and did very many fine projects throughout the city, and he too will be much missed by his family and friends.
Mr. Parks.
I'd like to first adjourn in memory of Ralph L. Williams, born September twenty-first, nineteen thirty-eight. He passed away on March fifth, two thousand and three, at the age of sixty-four. He was raised and educated in Baltimore, attended and graduated from Morgan State College. He was commissioned as a second lieutenant in the U.S. Army. After three years in the Army, he rose to the rank of captain, what he's best known for in the city of Los Angeles since nineteen seventy-five. He founded a family counseling organization under the name of Self-Inprovement and Alternative Measures Incorporated. Primary goal is rehabilitating clients with alcohol abuse problems and assisting the homeless. His funeral services are tomorrow, twenty-sixth and his funeral home. He leaves a son, a sibling, and a host of other relatives.
Mr. Penn.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I don't have anything written down at this time, but I wanted to note the passing of a friend of many of our, Stanley Hirsch, who passed away this Saturday night at ten-thirty after a very long struggle with cancer. His services are pending tomorrow at two PM at Wilshire Boulevard Temple. For those of you who knew him, you know that Stanley was a most amazing and unusual person. Not only did he contribute much to the fashion industry and to the Jewish community and to the Democratic Party. One of my happiest memories of him was of a photograph that he had taken of himself with his arms outstretched in front of Air Force One. And, you know, he autographed it as, "All this could be yours." And he was just a really exuberant, wonderful, hilarious person who helped so many of us. So I wanted to share that information, and I'll come in with a more formal presentation tomorrow. Thank you.
All members. Other tributes?
I have tributes.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.